Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This is a conference meeting of the City Council of the City of Orange Township held in Council Chamber, City Hall, 29 North Day Street, Orange, New Jersey, on Tuesday, January 7th, at 7:04 PM. Roll call. Councilmember Coley?
Present.
Councilmember Easton?
Here.
Councilmember Hilbert?
Present.
Councilmember Montague III?
Present.
Councilmember Ross is absent. Councilmember Summers Johnson will be late. And Council President Wooten?
Here.
Also present is Joyce Lanier, the City Clerk, Tamara Robinson, the Deputy City Clerk, Chris Hartwick, the Business Administrator, Derrick Brown, the Fire Chief, Gracias Armentilla, Marlon Towns, Legislative Research Officer, Vincent Vidialo, Police Chief, and Trish Cipio, City Clerk's Office. Oh, and now, the CFO, Clements. Can we have a moment of silence?
Can we, Council President?
Councilwoman?
Since they're honoring former President Jimmy Carter today, could we dedicate this moment of silence to him?
Yes.
To celebrate his contributions?
Sure.
And achievements.
Thank you. Please be apprised, anyone wishing to discuss agenda or general items shall sign their name on the comment sign-up sheet and will be allowed to, a maximum of five minutes, to interact with the council. The requirements of NJSA 10:4-9 et cetera, Sunshine Law, has been met. A notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger, published in the Record Transcript on July 11, 2024, posted on the bulletin board in City Hall, the council's website, the city's website, and filed in the office of the City Clerk. We don't have any matters for discussion tonight. Councilmembers, are there any resolutions or ordinance on tonight's agenda that you wish to discuss?
So before, before we get too far down the road, I just wanted to let the council know that we're recommending that 32, 2024 remain tabled, 50, 2024 remain tabled, 51, 2024 remain tabled, and I'm withdrawing 1, 2025.
And in addition to that, we're gonna table 9, 2025. Resolution 9, 2025.
Table it or withdraw it? You gonna table it or withdraw it?
Let's withdraw it. Let's withdraw 9, 2025.
Okay.
And Council President?
Councilman Coley.
Resolution 7, 2025. I had a conversation with the City Attorney. He would like to make a statement regarding this resolution, please, sir.
Attorney Montague.
Good evening, Council President, Governing Body. Happy New Year to all. So this resolution represents the, or a settlement with Spawn Ranch. Obviously, this matter involves litigation, so there's a lot that I won't go into with respect to the aspects of the case in open session. But I can tell you that the $28,000 that's being requested represents the balance that's owed in the amount of attorney's fees and arbitration costs as a result of this case. The amounts that were paid, or the amounts that were outstanding, was for work done and completed and for reasons that we learned throughout the course of the case or the course of the action were not paid and resulted in this action taking place. So the money that's being requested in this resolution, again, is for attorney's fees and arbitration costs. But it is important to stress, and as I indicated to Councilman Coley earlier today, it's important to stress that the work that was bargained for, contracted for, was in fact completed. And we do have that information verified.
Thank you, Attorney Montague. Councilman Coley?
I just wanna thank him for taking the time out, meeting with me early today to get this matter cleared up, so I'm comfortable with supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Any other council members?
Council President? I had a question?
Councilwoman Easton?
On 11, 2025. Do you know that is a national holiday? It's a federal holiday. Do we need to put that on the agenda every year? Or if we're going to, is there some action we can do to maximize the importance of it?
I think what we could do is add it as an ordinance, can't we? To say that we will celebrate King Day in the City of Orange Township every year?
Well, I mean, you can, but it's already a federal holiday, which is observed, so... I think it would be probably a duplicative action on the part of the city. But I mean, I think the way you have it now, Council President, is just you're recognizing, I guess, or maximizing the importance of the holiday. It's not necessarily an adoption of the holiday which already exists. So...
But I mean, I'm trying to figure out, what are we doing to maximize it, though?
So, as is spoken in the resolution and the recitals, that in light of this past election, we need to do all types of things to maximize this day. We need to do stuff in the schools. I spoke to Superintendent Fitzhugh about the programs that they have in the schools. I know we normally do something in our church, so our churches, and we just need to make sure that our youngsters and our young people know the importance of the holiday. Therefore, it will speak to their civic duties.
Elena, maybe next year when we think about this, we could put together a program for orators and have the kids write a speech or something of surrounding, so that we could have them come to the council and present it.
That would be great. Or we could do it, you could do that in February?
That's true.
For Black History Month. We could absolutely do that.
That's true.
Anyone else? Thank you, council members. Madam Clerk?
Council President?
Councilwoman Hilbert?
I did have some questions regarding one of the resolutions.
Councilwoman Hilbert?
For Resolution 6-2025, in regards to the releasing of a performance bond for Peak Development. Did Business Administrator explain a little bit more about this project and its location?
Sure.
Sure, this is the project on the corner of Lincoln and Highland. It is a mid-rise multifamily residential development. It has, I forget the number of units, but I think it's in the neighborhood of 80. And the performance bond is posted as a result of the requirements of the redevelopment agreement. And once the requirements of the redevelopment agreement are satisfied, which includes satisfaction of the resolution of compliance and a certificate of occupancy and a certificate of completion being delivered, then the performance bond can be released.
Okay, so just to clarify, it is the current building that's currently under construction? And it's one building, or is it two?
No, it's Phase 1 of the two buildings. It's the one that's occupied.
The one that's occupied?
Not the one that's under construction.
Okay, not the one that's under construction. Okay. And the COI has already been released, 'cause there's people already in it?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman, you good?
I'm done. Thank you.
Madam President? I mean, Madam Clerk.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second, Coley.
Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Easton, second by Councilmember Coley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned at 7:14 PM. This is a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Orange Township held in Council Chamber, City Hall, 29 North Day Street, Orange, New Jersey, on Tuesday, January 7th, 2025, following the conference meeting. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Can we have Councilman Montague lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Councilmember Coley?
Present.
Councilmember Easton?
Present.
Councilmember Hilbert?
Present.
Councilmember Montague III?
Present.
Councilmember Ross is absent. Councilmember Summers Johnson is absent and will be late. And Council President Wooten?
Here.
Also present is Joyce Lanier, the City Clerk, Tamara Robinson, the Deputy City Clerk, Chris Hartwick, the Business Administrator, Derrick Brown, Fire Chief, Gracia Armentilla, City Attorney, Marlon G. Towns, Legislative Research Officer, Vincent Vidialo, Police Chief, and Trish Cipio, City Clerk's Office, and now Clements, the CFO. The requirements of NJSA 10:4-9 et cetera, Sunshine Law, has been met. A notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger, published in the Record Transcript on July 11, 2024, posted on the bulletin board in City Hall, the council's website, the city's website, and filed in the office of the City Clerk. There are no meeting minutes, reports, revenue collection department. November 2024, community service collected $36,134. There are no Oprah reports. Council reports? There are no council re-
File. They were filed.
They were filed. Communication and petitions, there are none. Citizen comments. Members of the public wishing to address the council may do so during this portion of the meeting. Speakers must sign their name on the comment sign-up sheet and approach the microphone when called upon. To allow maximum public involvement, each speaker is permitted five minutes, a five-minute period to interact with the council and must provide his or her name and street address prior to beginning any remarks. Visual aids are not permitted. Speakers are reminded to be courteous and mindful of other individuals. Each person has the right to speak on any subject but is responsible for a breach of that right. The city bears no liability for any comments made by the public and maintains discretion to remove any person engaging in obscene or destructive conduct. The council will consider all comments and questions and will respond if and when appropriate, which may or may not be during this meeting. Alice L. Lang? Yes, ma'am, Alice Lang.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And good evening to all of you that took time to come out tonight. I appreciate it. My name is Alice Lang. I reside at 400 Oakwood Avenue. I'm the Tenant Association President. And I have been calling, and people have been calling, and not getting a response to heat. There are a lot of older, sick people there, and I know they have to be in pain, because I'm in pain with just one injury when it's cold. It's been down to 18 degrees. I had the state come out of Christmas Eve, and I had the state come Monday as well. They said they did contact someone here to tell them to respond to our heat complaints. I get calls day and night. I had a text I was gonna read to you, but I don't feel like reading. But it was from a healthy tenant that said she is putting her heating pad on her feet, on her legs, on her back, warming up her bed with it. And I know she wasn't lying, because I was doing the same thing. When the inspector, Mr. Francis, came from Trenton, the heat went up. I asked him to check the boilers, because when I moved in, a couple of boilers were broken. He said all of the boilers are working. They did have one that a pipe burst, but they fixed it Christmas Eve. When they pushed the heat up, it seems like a pipe breaks. But also, as soon as he left, the heat went down. And people are burning ovens. And they shouldn't have to do that, because we do pay for electricity. So I'm asking that you have someone come out. And no team came out before. If they did, I don't know about it, and none of the tenants I spoke to know about it. But to please come out, let me know that they're coming and when they're there, so they can check the heat in the different apartments. We have a list. I have people sign up. The manager said she doesn't want any response to a list that the people should call themselves. And everybody doesn't remember a number. You know, it's difficult. And it's pain, I know it has to be painful, the bedridden patients, you know, tenants that are older, so I hope you do that.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Lang?
Can you commit to that?
I'm getting ready to, I just wanna make sure. Is that it for you?
Well, other than sitting in the lobby with the mice running around?
Okay.
And in the halls. But I was gonna contact OSHA, because I do believe it's a sick building. And church services are constantly canceled in the building, because people go in and then they have respiratory issues after.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lang.
Yeah, I'm already texting the appropriate people.
Ms. Lang, someone from the administration regarding heat is gonna call you tomorrow in the morning. You're welcome. Thank you. Ms. Carolyn McMillan?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. I hadn't planned on coming. It was, it's cold out there. It is extremely cold out there. But this issue is important to me, because it involves a family member. And you've had discussions-
Do you say your address for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Hayward Avenue, 174 Hayward Avenue. And what it is, is the bodega that is on, I guess that's Argyle and Scotland Road. My niece had an accident there today, because a truck was parked there, right? And there was a close accident prior to them, and then she had the bad luck to have the accident. These are young people, right? Could not see around the truck either way, right? In order for the person who was behind the truck, she had to go out, because these are big, these are wide trucks. You have to go out into the other lane, just to see if somebody's coming. But in the meantime, you could get hit either way. My niece was coming from Argyle. She couldn't see, because the truck was there, so she has to come out further into the street, right? I don't understand why this has not been taken care of. I almost got hit. I have, I'm old. I have to be very careful, right? And this has been brought up before, and nobody's done anything. You have police, we're only 2.2 miles. You mean the police can't go up and down Scotland Road to see these trucks there? And it's not that the guy do not have a driveway. He has one in the back with an entrance that they could bring that stuff into. So either find the trucker or find the business owner. And maybe that will stop them from doing it. Because when it costs me money, I'll stop doing it, right? Because I heard about a similar situation that we're having with some business. And the way he parks his trucks. You find them, you've getting them tickets, right? Question for you, common sense, why don't you just tow the trucks? Because when they have to go and get theirs, because I know I got upset when I had to go get my car one time from Newark.
Absolutely.
Right? But no one seems to use common sense about, that's the most simplest thing to do. If you did everything you did, due diligence, and they still disrespectful of the ordinance that you have, of the police that you have, start towing their stuff. Because when it starts costing them money, believe me, I will move it. I'll be running out there moving it.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, absolutely.
But that's what it's doing. But like I said, if it wasn't for the fact that my niece was in an accident, because I'm asking, what happened to your car? There you go. Be in no, no, that's being observant. What happened to your car? And then she tells me about the bodega down the street, right? So I'd like to know what's gonna be done to police these areas with the double parking, with the trucks, to make it safe for people to come and shop in this area and do whatever it is they have to do. Anyone can answer. I don't care.
Ms. McMillan, so I sit on a meeting, a monthly meeting with the county, and Scotland Road is a county road, I believe I'm right. And our liaison texted and said he couldn't be here tonight. But I know this has been brought up in that meeting. And maybe we could get a meeting with the county liaison and people?
Well, Council President, let me just-
Go ahead, Councilwoman Easton.
That was brought up by another resident, I think it was Ms. Scott, some while back.
It was a few residents brought it up.
The police went out there and they talked to, I know for a fact, they went out there and talked to the owner to relieve that, relieve it. And they told the owner to have his trucks unloaded in the parking lot. And he was doing it for a while, I guess, because there was no problems. But I guess he's back to his old... So Venna, you can follow up with your captain, because your captain went out and talked to the-
Yeah, I would like to talk to you where you're explaining.
Yeah, okay. Okay. He went out and talked to the owner.
And also, we can get the Sheriff's Department. I know Chief Vidialo has a relationship with them as well, to see if they could step up.
You said that it stopped for a while. It didn't. It didn't. Believe me, it didn't. I live right on Hayward. And, you know, frequent the bodega. It didn't. I park in the back, right? So it's like they ignore what we say. As long as they get in the business, most of your traffic is walk, most of your business is walk-in business anyway, right? So whatever you can do to help, that would be great.
Bodega is ours. The road is a county road.
It's a county.
The bodega is the, under the jurisdiction of Orange.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Gloria Bozeman?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Gloria Bozeman? 345 Alcott Street. First, I wanna say Happy New Year to everyone that's here. May it be your best year yet. That's my traditional. Nevertheless, the last time that I was here in person, I was disappointed, because it seemed as though city council members were really critiquing those individuals who come to the podium. And we have a right, and I consider it a privilege, to come to the podium and address elected officials. You may not always like what I have to say, but it is our right to come, and it is our right to say it. You say that you can answer questions when and if, you know, it becomes appropriate. I think it's appropriate to even say to us at the time of the question, "We will get back to you," or maybe we will see what it is that we could do about the situation. I do wanna say, I did send that email, as requested, to Director Harwick. Is that right? Hartwick? Close enough? All right, good. I did send that communicate to him. And without that follow-up, I addressed it at the Zoom meeting. And then I wrote again to you, Council President,
Sure, do you?
To say, you know, listen, I'd like to have a response to that, because not responding to me is almost disrespect. I appreciate that you responded back to me. And I've also heard from the director. I wanna make it public, the questions that I'm asking and anticipating a response from, because I believe that any councilperson should be able to answer these questions, in addition to the director. And I've got background to it, but I'm gonna avoid the background and just go straight to the questions. Based on the current proposal and developments, what will be the additional population added to the city based on all of the occupancies, the resident developments I see coming up? What is the current occupancy and vacancy rate in the completed developments that exist now? We have a right to know. Are we just doing surplus? Are we actually addressing the need that exists in a community? How does the city view these new developments impacting revenue? Does it generate revenue for us? Or does it offer us any tax relief? Or what is the actual benefit of this multiplicity of developments? What is the plan for public spaces? I go on to talk about what City Pick says about the need for public spaces. And without public spaces, we begin to talk about increased crime. We begin to talk about women particularly being depressed, because it is an opportunity. We socialize out in open spaces. And without those open spaces, then we place ourselves in jeopardy. What is the current plan for the revitalization of Main Street? Since several residents have indicated they don't even do shopping on Main Street. What is the proposal for the former YWCA, where we all learn to swim? And if you didn't learn to swim, your child learned to swim at the WYCA. Why in this development, I see it, why in this development, quickly, for the hospital center at Orange, which I don't know how far along we've come with that, is there a proposal for a new City Hall? As opposed to a proposal for a technology center for our youth, a recreation center for our youth, an enhanced library experience for our youth, a career development, a artistry like SoPAC, a theater, a cinema? Why the City Hall gets a new building when the residents of us don't get a benefit with regard to that new development? Finally, which was not on there, and I'll ask again. I know that you told me that you're looking at, and I appreciate that. I understand it's the end of the fiscal year, and there are some ti- I guess that's your fiscal year. Is this your fiscal year? Okay, ours was always in July. But nevertheless, I appreciate that there are things that have to be done and taken care of at this point in time. But I also appreciate the fact that I do anticipate an answer to those questions. And finally, a new question that will be coming to you is that I've looked at several municipalities who offer rideshare services to their elderly. I don't know if they got a grant for it. I don't know what it is that they, what it is that they were able to do that we're not able to offer to our residents. So that's forthcoming. That's not now. But it will be coming in my list of things that I would appreciate a response to. So thank you for responding, and I look forward to hearing the answers to those questions. 30 seconds left.
Thank you.
Ms. Rachel Tennant? Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Rachel Tennant, 461 Waverly Place. I don't know. I am really bothered. When a city creates ordinances, but they don't enforce them, what's the point? My brain functions at probably 80%, because I had an aneurysm several years ago. And even with my half a brain, I could still conclude that there's a lot wrong with this city. When you make an ordinance, you have to have follow-through. You have to check if the property owners are following the law. And if they're not following the law, something needs to be done. If I could follow through with half my brain, I think you guys in total should get things done. Stop letting these people get away with nonsense. There's no reason for senior citizens to be suffering. Now, come on. It's ridiculous. Now, I see that 416, matter of fact, let me ask, 416 Lincoln, Peak Development, they're running an Airbnb out of there, okay? Are we getting anything from that? And we gave them a tax abatement. So we gave them a tax abatement, and they're also running Airbnb out of that building. Do you know how many Airbnb, Airbnbs they have? Does the city allow it?
Ms. Tennant, you're talking about 6, 20, 25, right?
I'm just speaking in general.
Oh, okay.
They have an Airbnb. They have the intercom system and everything outside.
At 416 Highland? Is that what you?
The Peak Development, 416?
Yes, ma'am.
They run Airbnb. All you have to do is walk, and you can see the intercom system for the Airbnb that's running out of that development, that we gave a tax abatement to. No one thinks that's a problem? That's a problem. You're running a whole side business. Are we getting any revenue from that? I mean, come on. And lastly, 1, 2025. Ordinance on first reading. Approving a five-year tax exemption.
It's been pulled.
It's pulled? It's pulled?
Yes.
Okay, even though it's pulled, let me add my two cents. This is what we should have been doing, five years. I don't think the residents, I mean, they have a problem with the tax abatements, tax exemptions, whatever. However, I think if the, if you guys voted for five years, and if they're running a good show, they're keeping the buildings up, then you might be able to extend it. But to give a thirty-year, there's no reason for them to do nothing but collect their money. Okay? And turn this city into a slump. That's what I don't want. I liked my nice little quaint orange, nice and clean.
Thank you, Ms. Tennant.
Ma'am clerk.
The motion to close citizen comments.
Motion to close, Coley.
Second, Montague.
Motion to close citizen comments by Councilmember Coley, second by Councilmember Montague, the third. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Council comments?
Councilwoman Gilbert.
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome.
First and foremost, thank you to all the residents who came out to attend today, and to the administration and our colleagues and all the departments. Happy New Years. Also, Happy Haitian Independence Day, bon anné, to all those who are watching. I'm going to try to keep it short and brief, because I'm struggling for air over here. But I do see a couple of things, a couple of walk-ons, that I do want to address to my colleagues and the administration. Number one, right here, I see that there is a walk-on. Can I talk about this, or you want to wait until later?
You have to wait.
It's not on your agenda yet.
It's not on the agenda yet? Okay. All right, so what about the reports that we received from the departments? Could I speak to that? Because that's not listed anywhere here. Yes?
Department reports?
Yes. So we received an email about like around two-thirty today in regards to the reports from different departments. I feel that that's not really effective. If we wanted to ask questions of some of the representatives from the departments, I think it would be more efficient for us as a council to receive those documents at least twenty-four hours prior, the day before a meeting. Also, when I had to scan through them quickly, I noticed that we did not have a report from Recreation. Is there a reason why?
It wasn't submitted.
It wasn't submitted. Okay.
In a timely fashion.
In a timely fashion. Okay, so will we receive that before the next meeting? What are the repercussions? What plan of action has been put in place?
Well, I can discuss the repercussions toward the disciplinary issues, personnel issues. But I can tell you that the report was submitted late, and it'll be submitted to the clerk's office.
Okay. I appreciate that, but I just want to be very honest and very clear. This is a new year, twenty-twenty-five. Twenty-twenty-four was interesting, but I am not satisfied with the performance of the Recreation Department. And I'm not talking about the staff who works with my kids and the kids in this school district, but I'm talking about their leadership. And I feel that we need an improvement, and we need a plan of action. We need new opportunities, and we need better reports, and we need, we need responsibility. Because even when we were having meetings on Zoom virtually, the Recreation Department was not represented. And I hope that changes in this new year. Okay?
Just with respect to the reports, they're submitted bi-weekly, and they're submitted to the clerk's office. So even if you got a report today, there was a report from two weeks ago that was submitted up to and including that day.
I understand. Thank you.
And so, Councilwoman, the Recreation is not a department, it's a division of community service. So the report will come from the Community Service Department. It won't be an individual report from Recreation.
Right. So the, the, the director is Director of Community Service, who is housing over Recreation, the Health Department, and I believe is older adults?
And several more, yes.
Right. So I'm speaking in relations to that specific leader of the departments.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
I also want to direct a few comments to, let me put this here. In regards to what we're talking about for Airbnbs. On October seventh, I sent an email that included Mayor Warren, the Business Administrator, and their secretaries, and the Law Department, stating that I had proposed and submitted legislation for Airbnb ordinance in the city of Orange, and that it was rejected by the Law Department and never added to my council's agenda. I asked for a meeting in order to discuss what we could do to move this ordinance forward. The Law Department has never submitted anything to me to say why they rejected. They never submitted any recommendations or suggestions in order to modify this. And it hasn't been able to be presented to my council colleagues because I'm not quite sure what is the pushback from the administration. So when can I expect to have a response on that?
Attorney Montales or B A Hartwhite?
So Councilwoman, I'm not. I recall towards the end of the year, I did submit an email to all council members, asking if there were any issues, any open issues that needed to be discussed, discussed before the year's end. I don't remember getting any response. I certainly didn't get a response from you. So to the extent that there is an issue that you'd like to discuss, you can certainly reach out to me and I'll make the appropriate appointment. I do believe one of my deputies is working on that, so I don't have any problem scheduling with you. So if that's what is your pleasure, that's fine. I don't. I'll just leave it at that. So like I said, one of my deputies is in fact working on it. Whenever you want to make yourself available, we'll schedule the meeting.
So that doesn't quite answer my question. What I was stating is that I already initiated the contact, and I was waiting for you to be the responsible party to tell me what your availability was, so we could talk about this. So what I was expecting, if you want to say that you have a deputy working on it, then you can say, Councilwoman Gilbert, I'll have my deputy reach out to you tomorrow.
So I'm available. When's your availability?
You can say that in an email, but I never received an email, and then I'm putting you on notice now that I never received the email.
I've taken your notice. I'm putting you on notice that I'm available. So whenever you're ready, let me know.
Okay. So again, this is not just for the Law Department, this is also for the administration. So this will have to include the Business Administrator as well, who has been more forthcoming and available to have these conversations with me. So B A Hartwhite, would you still be available possibly to tomorrow to have this conversation?
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll follow up with the, with the city attorney and the deputy city attorney who's working on it. I also have a separate inquiry from another councilperson on the same subject, which actually predates yours. So we're not ignoring it. It's a very complicated topic that requires careful legal research abroad, across a broad spectrum of locations and locales that are trying to regulate Airbnbs, as well as verbos and all kinds of other internet-based real estate-like businesses. And so I know, because I've had conversations with Mr. White, that the, the research is ongoing. I'll follow up with him and with Grass, and we'll get back to you.
Okay. I appreciate that. Last thing, just to the B A, just a question. Business Administrator also, yes, also as the representative for the West Ward. The West Ward has actually not been included in the conversations regarding the redevelopment of Orange Memorial Hospital. Is it possible for you also to coordinate a conversation with yourself and the developer and the West Ward council member?
There is going to be a series of public meetings. This, I know, doesn't address your particular question, your pointed question, but there will be a series of public meetings for the public, including West Ward. Anybody from the city, any stakeholders. The schedule for those meetings is being developed this week and will be published by the city. And will be on Wednesday or Thursday nights going forward over a period of four weeks.
Over a period of four weeks on Thursday nights?
Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay. And, Council President, I'm sorry, one more question.
One more?
Okay. The parking lottery, there were many complaints for residents that live on the Lincoln Avenue, Highland Avenue area, because it is actually the border of South Ward and West Ward. And they complained that they were not notified about the lottery, and they didn't have the opportunity to make the phone call for that deadline. And I did email you about that because I wasn't quite sure what your process was for that. Is there extra time given?
We extended the deadline.
Okay.
We leafletted Lincoln, including the buildings, all of the cars, during the day and at night.
Okay.
And we did a phone blast and an email blast.
Okay.
I don't know how else to get, oh, and it's on the website.
Okay.
So I don't know how else to get the word out beyond that. The decisions or the lottery results will be announced by the twentieth of the month.
The twentieth, okay. I was not here at the last meeting, so I was holding on to that question. But thank you so much. January twentieth is the new date. Okay, Council President, I am done. I promise you. Thank you so mu.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Montague.
Good evening, everyone, and a Happy New Year. I'm going to be very brief. I'm just getting over, you can hear my voice is always raspy, but just getting over, you know, a little cold. I'm hoping that this year, we're going to do it much better. I have a question to Nile. When are the worksheets due from each department?
The budget worksheets were due the Friday after Thanksgiving.
Did we receive everyone?
As of today, yes, we have received everyone's. We had to have some, go back and revise their worksheets to add more details. But we do have everything. So I guess while we're on the topic of the budget, the Division of Local Government Services pushed back the deadline. So the budget has to be introduced by March thirty-first this year. That's what we're aiming for. We'll see you soon with the budget.
Thank you so much. And I want to defer to my council colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Montague. Councilman Coley.
Before you begin, let me just announce that Councilwoman Summers Johnson arrived at seven forty-two.
Thank you, ma'am clerk. Good evening, Happy New Year, everybody. I hope everyone had a safe and enjoyable holiday season. Mine was a little, you know, different, but I'm here. About two-thirty this afternoon, I received a phone, a phone call from some residents down at four hundred Oak Avenue. They was in the community room complaining about some apartments not having heat. I immediately reached out to Deputy Director Wingfield, and he sent his inspector down there. By four-thirty, he gave me a call back that the inspector visited about four or five different apartments on different floors. And, and the apartments that, that he visited, the heat, from his, I guess, instrument that he used to gauge the heat, was between seventy-eight and eighty-one degrees in those apartments. I expressed that, you know, to the resident that called me. And, and he's going to go back tomorrow and, 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 and see if he could do a spot check on, you know, some other apartments, so they could try and get this matter under control. I understand, and I know that we are in the winter, and, and, and heat is very important. Being comfortable is very important. And I don't take this lightly. This is why when I get these complaints, I try and get the necessary resources to these problems as quickly as possible, like today. And I know that Ms. Lane came up today and complained about, you know, the heat, which I'm not saying that isn't an issue, but I do know that from what I received today, the matter was addressed as quickly as possible, and there will be some more follow-up tomorrow regarding all this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Coley. Councilwoman Easton.
Yeah, I just want to say Happy New Year to everyone. And I'm hoping and praying that we will have a good year this year as we all work together in a positive manner and learn to talk to each other and have a conversation versus always condemning and criticizing. So I'm going to start off this new year with a new expectation and a new focus on all of us staying together to learn to listen and try and work through our issues in a positive manner, rather than being sarcastic or condescending and, and just working together as people, which is what we need, we are going to have to learn to do as we go into this new presidency. We got to stick together for unity, because in unity, there is power. And so I'm hoping that we all take that, learn to love thy neighbor as thyself, and treat thy neighbor as we would like to be treated, and talk to thy neighbor as you would like to be talked to, and respect each other. And as we move forward, I just want to say, for me as a councilperson, I, I do have a lot of the answers, and I know a lot of it because I investigate and I do research. But we do have an administration, a city attorney's office, who we always allowed to answer questions just so we keep the information consistent and right, and that facts are given and not how I feel or things are taken out of context. We pay these guys a lot of money to keep this city together. So when we don't answer the questions, sometimes it's because we know they have the answers, they have the facts, they do the research. And we have a new person on board that's going to help our Business Administrator out, so he's not trying to keep up ten balls at one time, so he can at least let go at least four of them, so he can concentrate on the ones at hand. But I want us all to work together. And I also want to say, there's a new group in my ward called Hello Gorgeous.
Yes.
And, and they have an event on the seventeenth. And they're going to do massages, facials, it's for men and women. And those women have some products that you might be interested in. So if you want to come out on the seventeenth and take advantage, try it out. They have a beautiful facade in the front, and you might get some interesting things for the new year. But we just need to promote our new businesses as they come to Orange and give them some type of advertisement, so people will know they're there and that they could take advantage of. Because Orange does have some good things to offer. And we were just talking earlier, Wawa is doing absolutely phenomenal. I mean, it is always busy, so. And they do do a good job. I love their coffee. So let's just all work together and be role models for our young folks as they're coming up and seeing that we're doing positive things for, for this community in Orange. And if you have that you need something, make a phone call. Everything does not have to come to a council meeting. We're all available. I answer my phone all the time. I return all my calls. So if you have questions and somebody's not responding, just feel free to call me, and you will definitely get a call back. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Easton. Councilwoman Summers Johnson.
Greetings. Sorry for being tardy. I guess I'll start with, when we had the youth come and speak about voting in the election, I just want to tell you that I gave my number, you know, to them, and they have become my texting buddies. And like talking politics with fifth and sixth graders is really like interesting, but I'm, I'm excited because when they turn eighteen or sixteen, they won't be lost. We have Dr. Martin Luther King Day coming up, and I know I have always known it to be a day of service. We need it more than ever. Council President and West Ward District Leader, Mayor's Hotline Coordinator, and Food Bank Person, Stacy Martin. The three of us, we're going to be packing bags for the homeless on January twentieth in council chambers in council chambers from ten to twelve. We have community service hours available, and you can contact any of us. We're looking for trial-sized donations so we can pack up the bags. Also, I would like to thank Orange Police, Orange Police, I know they're all around. Argyle and Scotland, I go to the corner store every morning, and there are residents complaining about people parking in the bus stop, and some of our handicap residents weren't able to get to the bus stop. So I wanna say within like the past week, I've seen it clear. So I just love to see things that residents bring to our attention, and we see action. I'm not sure if someone brought up, but someone sent me a screenshot of someone complaining about the underpass, but I know we don't do anything with the streets during the winter. But I just wanna know, as far as the underpass, is it the City of Orange and New Jersey Transit that repairs it? Or is it just the City of Orange?
The underpass itself, the structure, is repaired by New Jersey Transit. The roadway is repaired by us.
Okay, so is it the size of the trucks that are causing them to, as fast as we patch them?
It's a couple of things, but the size of the trucks definitely deteriorates the roadway faster than ordinary traffic.
Because I was thinking, I was, I think it's Valley, like, a lot of those streets, residents were complaining like their houses shake because of the size of the trucks that are using that. So I was wondering, Valley, yeah, I was wondering.
We're researching whether or not we can limit the weight.
That's what I was gonna say. Okay, okay.
It's a little complicated because it crosses multiple municipalities.
Yes, yes.
So we have to coordinate with other municipalities, and the research is still being done.
Okay. And lastly, you know, I attend a lot of the youth basketball games. I attend because my son plays, but more importantly, when I'm in the audience, I'm like the mother, the teacher. Many of our youth go to these games. They don't have their parents with them. They're really just crying out, you know, they would be labeled bad in society. However, they're just looking for direction. So if they use bad words around me, I'm like, I take cash at five dollars a curse, but you know, we have to, we can't be scared of our youth. We have to actually get out, talk with them. They're not as bad as people think they are. And I just think that with Martin Luther King's birthday coming up and as Council Vice President said, with our new presidency coming up, we definitely need to unite more than ever. I was running home to grab my bag. I heard some of the citizen comments. So I just wanna say, I can take anything that comes to this booth. I've learned to take in what I can and ignore what I can't. I know that people are leaving this earth quicker than they are staying, and I just choose to take with whatever comes to me that I can actually do something with. So when I get screenshots of things that were posted online, sometimes, you know, they might have a picture of a clown, I mean, calling us every name. Good thing they'll never say it to our face. But I take the complaints, and that's what I try to bring back to my council because the clown pictures and stuff, I mean, I teach eighth grade. I'm used to stuff like that. But you would think people get to be a certain age, and you can get much more by sending emails. I read the emails. Like we said, our BA answers questions. We ask a lot of questions as soon as we get our packet. That's why we may not ask it here. It kinda makes sense for us to ask it prior to coming here as much as we can. But happy new year. This is gonna be the best year yet. I'm claiming it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson, Councilwoman Easton?
Councilwoman Summers, during the cold this year, just before Christmas, before the twenty-second, there's a homeless man living over there on Argyle.
On, it's a lot on Argyle, Argyle and Morris, but I haven't seen him in a while, so I don't know if.
I saw him last week.
Last week? Well, I go to the store in the morning around seven. I don't see him. I don't see the man by.
It was one of the coldest nights of the year, and I got a frantic phone call from one of the residents. They thought he was gonna freeze to death.
Are we cold blue?
And I sent, I asked the police just to go and check him out. But when they go, is there any place they can take them if they will go? Because I didn't see anything about.
JFK, right?
During cold blue, they go to JFK.
Yeah, JFK in Newark.
JFK in Newark?
Mm-hmm, they have the beds already set up, ready.
I'm assuming he wouldn't go with the police because he's been out there for years. And he used to be on, by Scotland, on.
Under, right by the train.
Yeah, by that, before you go up the hill on the bridge. Now he's moved down there, and they're just concerned that he's gonna freeze to death.
We'll check tonight.
Okay.
But he won't go. I mean, we've stopped and asked him, like, would you? He won't go. He said he'd rather stay there. It was safer. That's what he said.
It is sad because some nights are just too cold.
Tonight. Tonight is too cold. Happy new year to everybody.
Happy new year.
It's gonna be a wonderful year.
Yes, it is.
I see new people in the audience, or you may not be new. I just wanna say welcome to our city council meetings. I wanna let you know that we do so many several things that are really, really good for the City of Orange Township. You, you know, may or may not, you know, hear those things when you come to a council meeting, but we do so many good things for the residents in the City of Orange Township. We do so many community outreach programs. It is like insane. And I'm talking about each and every council person. We write so much and research so much legislation, which is one of the primary jobs that we have as council people in addition to adopting the budget. We do for certain things with our assembly people, with our state senators, and we even go to Washington from now, you know, now and then. So I just want you to know that there are several things that we do as council people, and we don't shout it out to ourselves sometimes because we're humble. And you have to have a bit of humility in doing this job. Some questions we answer, some questions we don't answer. And going forward, we'd just like you to know that the business administrator, he handles the day-to-day operation of the city, which is a job that we don't have. We don't have any jurisdiction over the business administrator. He reports to someone else, as well as the Law Department, as well as the Finance Department. So whenever you write those emails to us and copy us, that's great and fantastic, but all we can do is forward those emails to them and to their boss. So I just wanted to let you know that. But I also wanna let you know that this is a fabulous town. I think it's one of the greatest towns in the whole wide world. I love my city. I love working for the city. I work with a bunch of people who do the same. There is not anything that any one of these council people won't do for anyone in the City of Orange Township. I wanna let you know things that you don't know. You don't see pictures that we do. We pay people's rent. We pay electric bills for people. We get groceries for people. We give out tons of toys during the Christmas holiday for people. We collect coats for people. So there are several things that we do that you don't see, and there's not a camera there because we do them out of the kindness of our heart. But in addition to those things, we do talk to and love on our CFO, Mr. Now, Clemens, about the budget. That's one of the biggest things that we do. And we do write a lot of legislation, and we do send that legislation to the Law Department, and they do do research for us, as well as our research officer here, Mr. Towns, who's at every meeting. So I say it's gonna be a wonderful year. It's gonna be a fantastic year. I'm proud to live in the City of Orange Township, proud to be here with my co-council colleagues, and it's gonna be a fantastic year, like Councilwoman Easton, Councilwoman Summers Johnson, Coley, Hilbert, Weldon Montague, Councilman said, reach out to us. If you can't get us, reach out to another council member. A lot of us have several different jobs in addition to this job, but we answer our phones just about twenty-four seven. I mean, if we're, if I'm reporting deer in the West Ward at ten o'clock at night, you know I answer my phone. I will end this with, so many times in life, you learn so many different things, right? And even when people come up to the podium, you learn things from them. Now, it was a comment made that a council person got on people who were coming to the podium. That's not true. That's not true. You can look at the tapes. I got on two people that were sitting in the audience being so loud that the council colleagues couldn't hear what the person that was standing at the podium was saying. So that's the truth. That's the facts. I would never try to keep someone from speaking their piece at the microphone. It was two people in the chambers that day. The police officer was here. We had to stop them a total of three times because they were talking so loud, and they were catcalling. And they were making disruptive comments. And I had council members telling me, Adrian, we can't hear what the people are saying. So that's what was going on that day. If anybody felt that I was trying to keep them from talking at this mic, I apologize, but that's not what happened. So with that, I'll say, Madam Clerk, would you move the agenda, please? And thank you.
Ordinance on second reading, public hearing, thirty-two dash twenty twenty-four, an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Orange Township, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, to approve and adopt the scattered sites redevelopment plan, implementing specific development regulations and bulk zoning standards applicable to the scattered sites redevelopment area, all in accordance with local redevelopment and housing law NJSA forty A colon twelve A dash one et cetera. The recommendation is for this to remain table. Is there a motion to lift it from the table?
Motion.
To keep it table.
To keep it table.
Motion to keep it table.
Second, Summers Johnson? Okay, motion to keep it table by.
Council President, if I may?
Council, I mean.
I'm council. Not yet. You don't need to do anything if it's already table. You need to take action. It just stays table.
Just stay.
It just stays table.
So just take back your motions.
I take back my motion.
Take back my motion. Thank you. This item will remain table. Fifty dash twenty twenty-four, ordinance to amend the code of the City of Orange Township, Chapter two hundred and title vehicle traffic, section two hundred dash fifty-two dash one, handicap parking spaces, four seventy-one Hillside Avenue. This item is tabled, and the suggestions for it to remain table. They don't have to make a motion to remain table?
No, ma'am.
No? Okay. Fifty-one dash twenty twenty-four, ordinance to amend the code of the City of Orange Township, Chapter two hundred and title vehicle and traffic, section two hundred dash fifty-two dash one, handicap parking spaces, four seventy-seven Hillside Avenue. This item is also tabled, and the recommendation is for it to remain table. Ordinance on introduction, first reading, one dash twenty twenty-five, an ordinance approving a five-year tax exemption for a multi-dwelling rental project constructed and/or erected by Orange NJ Properties LLC at two fifty Snyder Street, Orange, New Jersey, pursuant to the provision of the five-year exemption and abatement law NJSA forty A colon twenty-one dash one et cetera and Chapter one eighty-seven of the municipal code of the City of Orange Township. The recommendation is to, a motion to withdraw.
A move to withdraw?
Second, Summers Johnson? Motion to withdraw by Councilwoman, and second by Councilmember Summers Johnson on the motion? CNN roll call. Councilmember Coley?
Yes.
Councilmember Easton? Councilmember Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross is absent. Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
And Council President Wooten?
Yes.
So this item is withdrawn. Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be root, I'm sorry. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be rooted and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member's sole request, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Council members, I think nine is gonna be withdrawn?
Right.
And I believe Grass already, Mr. Montellus already explained number seven. Are there any other items? No. The consent agenda consists of one dash twenty twenty-five, two dash twenty twenty-five, three dash twenty twenty-five, four dash twenty twenty-five, five dash twenty twenty-five, six dash twenty twenty-five, seven dash twenty twenty-five, eight dash twenty twenty-five, ten dash twenty twenty-five, eleven dash twenty twenty-five, twelve dash twenty twenty-five, thirteen dash twenty twenty-five, fourteen dash twenty twenty-five, and fifteen dash twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Move, Coley.
Second, Summers Johnson? Councilmember Coley, second, by Councilmember Summers Johnson on the motion? CNN roll call. Councilmember Coley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilbert?
Yes.
I mean, Easton, I'm sorry, but I heard your yes too. Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross is absent. Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
And Council President Wooten stepped out of the room. That's five yeas and one absent, and one stepped out the room. New business walk-on ordinance slash resolution, other pending business. Sixteen dash twenty twenty-five, resolution approving the temporary virtual meeting schedule due to the winter weather for regular city council meetings scheduled for January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, February fourth, twenty twenty-five, and February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion to walk this item on the agenda?
Motion to walk on, Summers Johnson?
Motion to walk on by Councilmember Summers Johnson, second, by Councilmember Hilbert on the motion? CNN roll call. Councilmember Coley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross is absent. Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wooten? No, Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
And Council President Walker stepped out the room. So this item is now on the agenda. Sixteen dash twenty twenty-five, resolution approve, approving temporary virtual meeting schedule to winter weather for the regular city council meeting scheduled for January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, February fourth, twenty twenty-five, and February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. There a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Summers Johnson.
Order of order.
Yep.
You just walked on sixteen to twenty twenty?
Yeah. Motion to adopt is Councilmember Summers Johnson, second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hilbert on that motion? CNN roll call. Councilmember Coley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross is absent. Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wooten stepped out the room, and Council President Easton?
Yes.
Council Vice President Easton, sorry. So that's six yeas, one absent, well, two, two absent. Councilmember, is there any other business that you wish to discuss at this time? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Summers Johnson?
Second, Coley.
Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Summers Johnson, second by Councilmember Coley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned at eight thirteen PM.